It is now one o'clock, Tuesday, February 4th, for the regular City Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
It is now Commissioner Landgraf's turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day that you have given us. We ask for your guidance and direction in all that we do. Lord, I pray that you watch over Garden City, especially our first responders. Lord, my heart aches for those who tragically lost loved ones last week, and I pray that you be with them. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Next up is the approval of the minutes. Any changes on that? I'll stand approved as presented. Public comment? This is a time during the meeting that we have public comment on any items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to come forward and talk about anything that's not on the agenda, please state your name. We give you five minutes. All right, moving on. 6A.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6A. Matt Bennett, on behalf of 2107 East Kansas Avenue LLC, requests the governing body consider taking ownership of a private detention pond in Legacy Crossing addition.
Mayor and Commissioners, 2107 East Kansas Avenue LLC is requesting that the city of Garden City take ownership of their detention pond facility in Legacy Crossing addition. The detention pond is plus or minus half an acre and serves the entire commercial development, including the six lots and public streets. The pond was built large enough such that the individual lots will not be required to have their own detention facilities. The certificate of completion was completed by the developer on December 7, 2023, which states that all public infrastructure was completed in accordance with the city building and subdivision regulations and the negotiated terms of the development agreement. The city inspected the infrastructure and signed the notice of acceptance on December 7, 2023. After public infrastructure was completed and inspected, the developer is required to maintain the infrastructure for one year before the city takes the maintenance of the infrastructure. However, the detention pond is not one of those items and remains the maintenance responsibility of the developer. The city currently owns and maintains at least two detention ponds in residential subdivisions, the Southwest Pond in Chapel Heights Fourth Edition and Sunflower Crossing. The detention pond in Chapel Heights Fourth Edition serves as a dual purpose as part of their open and dedicated space for a park. It should also be noted that this maintenance was identified in the development agreement prior to the project commencing. The city also maintains regional detention facilities such as Forest Lake Park, Bob Holleran Park, Scholman Pond, and East Side Retention Pond. If the City Commission denies the request, there is no further action needed. If the City Commission is interested in approving the request, staff recommends directing staff to prepare an amendment to the development agreement to reflect a change in maintenance and responsibilities between the parties. Your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the request from 2107 East Kansas Avenue to take ownership of the detention pond and direct staff to prepare an amendment to the development agreement. The governing body may deny the request from 2107 East Kansas Avenue to take ownership of the detention pond, or the governing body may provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body deny the request from 2107 East Kansas Avenue LLC to take ownership of the detention pond. There is no fiscal impact associated with denying the request. If the City Commission approves the request, there would be staff resources dedicated to maintenance of the detention pond from this point forward. And I believe Matt Bennett is in attendance today if there's anything you would like to add.
Do you have anything to add, Matt? If you want to step forward to the podium?
Appreciate you guys considering it. We're excited about the development, and we're excited our banks finally being built.
Congratulations.
So we're excited. But, you know, the infrastructure is complete. We appreciate the city taking that over. We just thought that it would make sense. You know, the pond's there. The city has the infrastructure already there. It would make sense for the city to take that over as part of the infrastructure. So that is our request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
No, I do have some questions for Alicia, just so I may. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
So the other ones that we have maintenance over are basically either in city-owned parks or else they're in residential areas. So this is the first time a commercial entity is asking, and then so this would basically set a new precedent. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item, then?
I move that we deny the request from 2107 East Kansas Avenue to take ownership of the detention pond.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6B. Steve Dyer, Market Manager for Pioneer Communications, requests governing body consideration of a letter of support and a commitment of $20,000 towards a Kansas Adopt 2.0 grant application to install public Wi-Fi in strategic locations across Garden City. Commissioners, Pioneer Communications is submitting this grant application to place public Wi-Fi infrastructure in Garden City with an emphasis in locating the infrastructure in or near city parks. The request for funding will be near $1 million. The criteria for this grant asks for a local match from the applicant and a percentage local match from the community, which could be met by local governments, other nonprofits, or local businesses to show community support. The percentage amount on a $1 million grant award would be $20,000. Steve Dyer, Market Manager for Pioneer Communications, is asking for the city of Garden City to provide the $20,000 local community match. Your alternatives are that you, the governing body, may commit the requested $20,000 local match to a successful grant application. The governing body may approve an amount less than $20,000 toward a local match to a successful grant application, or the governing body may deny the request. Staff doesn't have a recommendation. This is an unbudgeted item. If the governing body does approve this request, it would be anticipated to take a portion from the general fund and a portion from the electric utility. Those changes would be reflected in the amended 2025 budgets when you create your 2026 budget. The city has recently received private gifts to enhance the park system in the amount of $100,000. Specifically, those were requested to be used for Holleran Park, but that was also given the city flexibility to use it at your discretion. A portion of those funds could fulfill the obligation from the general fund. And Steve is here. If you've got questions of Pioneer.
Do you have any other comments, or?
Just, you know, here to answer questions, but also just to let you know, you know, it's not budgeted. A budgeted item, obviously. This was really last minute for even us. The reason it's called Adopt 2.0 is because there wasn't a DOB, and they had extra money left over, and so they put a 2.0 out. So we were a little late. You know, it was a little late process for us, so apologize for bringing it to you after you've already done your budget for 2025. But, you know, it's a good way. We're putting in 50 grand, Pioneer is, and then the 20 grand if the city decides to approve that, and then it would be close to $1 million that we bring to the community for free public Wi-Fi. And then, of course, we would work with all the locations to do the installation and all of that, so there'd be no additional costs from anybody besides Pioneer.
So Steve, have you seen other communities do this? Is this, you said that, so this was an additional money? Are there other communities that have done this? And what's our experience with it?
Yeah, Manhattan, they've got, we got one of the first grants in Joaquinie. And in fact, we relied on them a lot for, you know, some of the type of information for our grant process. And that's the one I'm most familiar with. But, and that was just the first part of last year that they got that money. So it's, it's, it's a, it comes through the Kansas Department of Commerce is where the funding comes from. And the whole idea is to provide internet connections, you know, connect rural communities and the underserved to have to provide that access, so.
So is this a competitive grant? I mean, I mean, you're applying, so we might not get this. I mean, we could, but not, not for sure.
That's correct. Yeah, anybody in the state of Kansas could apply for it.
Okay.
It is very competitive, and so those local, those local matches, including the one that we're putting in, really help with the point system.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Steve, there's, so you said all parks, right? I mean, does that include all the city parks in Garden City?
Yes, yeah, it would include, yeah, all parks, the zoo, Stevens Park, the skate parks, all of that. That's all been identified in the grant.
I think the only question I had was that for maintenance moving forward, if this was, this was granted and installed, the maintenance for those towers or Wi-Fi structures would be a concurring cost on your end, or would you?
That's correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. This, I mean, this information is helpful. I believe it does line up with our commission goals that I brought up in last and prior meetings, but to have that available for students who are looking for internet, who don't, who can't afford it, that's, that's a place I'd go first. But just, and just for applications as well, this will kind of, I think, help out the community and its balance for what we're envisioning for the city. So appreciate that, even though it's late, but it's here. And if we're awarded, I certainly appreciate the, I know it's not budgeted, but I appreciate the funds that was given towards the Bob Holleran Park. And if this is a, if these monies could, could help improve the Holleran, Bob Holleran Park with Wi-Fi, then I believe that would be a justified fund to go towards that.
I appreciate also that you're not asking just for money, that you guys have also kicked in money. And I think that, again, this idea of really, you've had many partners involved in this. And I know Wi-Fi is really important. I wish we didn't have to spend so much time on our phones. It's sad, but I mean, because you're thinking a park, you should be playing or watching your kids play. And so that was the kind of the thing that I went back and forth, you know? I mean, but again, I know oftentimes Wi-Fi does a lot more than just, you know, having to be on your phone, or you don't have to watch movies out at the park, hopefully, you know, you can watch your kids play. But, yeah, I think it's a good idea, too.
Matt, do you have much more detail on what the financing structure would kind of look like?
The financing structure for the city's $20,000? No. When we go through the amendment of the 2025 budget, it would be a line item overrun, I would suspect, and whatever we used to, used to be Fund 171. We've got a new fund structure. Jared can come save me. But that's where kind of our community initiatives are, and so it would be a line overrun, though. We could transfer in the revenue, the aforementioned gift that had been given to the park system to buy down in whole or in part the general fund's obligation, and then the electric utility operates as a fund with no tax levying, so it's got budgeted reserves as well as a reserve fund in and of itself. So it can take the hit of a, of a cost overrun.
I know in the past, there's been, I know there was, there was talk of, or there's work been done on trying to get, expand like Wi-Fi in the community. Is, are we going to try to step on some other, I mean, are we kind of duplicating, or has that not come to fruition?
So Assistant City Manager Ramos and Drew Hardwick with our Information Technologies Department did a little research yesterday on where we have fee-based service and where we have general Wi-Fi service, and they can give you a quick overview.
Right now, we don't have any open access Wi-Fi in the parks or public spaces, including our buildings. We do have Wi-Fi that the public can access, but they have to request a password. And right now, there's no plans in place to put any Wi-Fi open access anywhere in the city.
Okay.
Is the, is the golf course considered a park?
Oh, my goodness.
And we have, now we have services with Pioneer to expand, hopefully, with some other parks and do some other things for the city and crew members to use their iPads and so forth, and the police use it, too, to upload video.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that question. I mean, again, we don't want to be in competition. The thing that really, that really sells me on this is where it's located. I mean, if it was located, you know, other places than parks, I think, then I would be less, less inclined to go ahead and vote for this. But with that, I move that we commit to the request a $20,000 local match to a successful grant application.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second? Any other discussion on this item?
I would like to say that it's great that it benefits not just a specific group of people. It's open to everybody, and that's.
Any other discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Item 7 is reported to the city manager. There aren't any of those that have presentations planned, but if you have any questions on those items, we'd be happy to try to answer those, or if you have a comment you want to make on any of those.
Liked the, the fourth quarter social media report. It was very, very well put together and very good. Also, the sales tax receipt was very impressive, so always like everybody shopping local or coming to town and shopping. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I really appreciate, our social media has really become the place to really find out almost anything. I've heard a lot of people, I was up in Leo lately recently, and somebody talked about, oh, yeah, did you read on there how they had, you know, some of the things at the fire that was out in 156? And so I really appreciate you staying really current with topics and all the different things, but we've really become an information hub, so I think that's pretty exciting, so.
All right, thank you. Meetings of note, those requiring RSVPs, if you'd please do those through the city clerk's office. Quite a few scheduled events, particularly around legislative activity this time of year. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2580-2025A.
Mayor, I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2580-2025A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing the time and date of a public hearing for the purpose of giving notice of a public hearing on the advisability of creating a community improvement district located at the 2800 block of East Highway 156. If approved, it would be resolution number 3157-2025. Danielle.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The item before you today is related to Icon Cinemas. You've had a number of items come before you related to this project. So we initially started the process for the TIP. The item before you today is focusing specifically on the community improvement district portion of this project. And so the action is to set a public hearing for the proposed CID request, and if approved, a public hearing would be set for March 4, 2025, at 1:30 PM in this building, in this room. City Bond Council Mary Carson has assisted in the preparation of the attached resolution, which has also been reviewed and approved by the developer. Two alternatives before you are to approve the resolution and set the public hearing, or you may not approve the resolution and provide staff with alternative direction. Staff would recommend that you all approve the resolution and set the public hearing, and there is no fiscal impact associated with setting that hearing.
Any questions? Entertain a motion, then?
I move to approve resolution number 3157-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from R3 multi-family residential and C2 general commercial district to public facilities for the property generally located at 2505 North 8th Street. If approved, it would be ordinance number 3005-2025.
Good afternoon. The Finy County Board of County Commissioners is requesting to rezone the property from R3 multifamily residential district to C and C2 general commercial district to PF public facilities district. The proposed property is generally, is currently vacant and is the intended future location of the Finy County Health Department and EMS facilities. The property is replotted as one large lot last year and is currently going through the cycle and review process for the new building. According to the Garden City zoning regulations, the PF zoning district is intended to provide areas for location of public uses. Specifically, the Finy County Health Department and EMS facilities would be categorized under the governmental services permitted use of the zoning district. The proposed zoning district in use is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map, which designates this area as medium-density residential potential. However, given the property's location along two arterial roads, it provides increased connectivity, which is critical for the proposed use of the county health department and EMS facilities. Additionally, this location's proximity to its current site will minimize the impact of the change and provide compatible transition between the residential and commercial zoning districts that directly above this location. As a result, this location and zoning district is the most appropriate for the proposed use. The governing body may make their determination and state their findings according to their criteria in section 27.040 of the Garden City zoning regulations. Including this memo is a complete list of these criteria. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed zoning request at the January 16, 2025 meeting, to which the minutes are attached. There are three alternatives in front of you. One, the governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by two-thirds majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the proposed ordinance. And there's no fiscal impact. I have to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I know that they're starting to review the bids coming in on Thursday that the county mentioned. Is this, what's the, what's the turnaround for having this rezoned?
For the rezone, once you guys approve it and it's published, then it is finalized, and then we're still going through the second review process, probably one or two months on that.
Okay. So it wouldn't impact on their schedule as far as when they need to start? Because I, yeah, I don't, I don't foresee them elongating that process, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? No. Okay.
I, I move that we approve ordinance number 3005-2025, an ordinance approving the rezoning of certain land in the corporate limits of Garden City from C2 and R3 to P6 public facility district that is commonly known and numbered as 2505 North 8th Street, Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution regarding the city's responding to a financial emergency plan. If approved, the resolution would be number 3158-2025. Jared.
Good afternoon. The city has identified the following circumstances under which a financial emergency should be declared, and has outlined the circumstances against formerly adopted financial management guidelines responding to a financial emergency. The commission is required to review these financial indicators each year. Staff provides the following information as of December 31, 2024, in response to each circumstance described in the guidelines. Number one, revenues are less than budgeted such that the city's projected budgeted revenues are no longer anticipated to cover projected expenses. Revenues in the general bond and interest and airport funds exceeded budgeted amounts. The property and motor vehicle tax collections of these funds show strong collections. Sales tax collections were also steady with an increase of approximately 3.2% over 2023 collections. City enterprise fund revenues, except for the electric utility, were always projected in the budget. The expenses in electric utility were below budget as well, balancing out the below-budget revenues. Number two, reserves fall below the performance goal as identified in the fund balance guideline. If the, if the fund balance has not yet met the performance goal, an emergency would be defined as a decrease in the reserve from the previous year if the spend-down of the fund was not planned or budgeted. The general fund cash balance on December 31, 2024 was $9,798,651. The fund balance policy for the general fund states that to maintain a minimum of 15% of the general fund's annual operating budget, that amount for 2024 is $5,751,605. The carryover cash to 2025 of $9,798,651 exceeded the budget estimate by $2,941,227. Community trust reserve is to maintain a minimum fund balance of $2 million. On December 31, 2024, the cash balance is $1,790,711. Costs for the Safe Street for All project are currently being expensed from the community trust reserve and are being reimbursed through federal and state grants. The balance is below $2 million as of December 31, 2024, due to the timing of expenses having occurred and grant reimbursements not having yet been received. Upon completion of the project, once all the reimbursements have been received, the fund balance will be restored to above the $2 million threshold. Number three, the city is unable to reduce expenditures in the amount required to structurally balance the budget. Though the city has measures in place should the situation occur, it would involve the city manager working with department heads to resolve budgeted expenditures that can be reduced. Number four, an unforeseen extreme event requiring significant expenditures for repair or remediation that exceeds 20% of the fund budget. The city did not experience any unforeseen extreme events requiring significant expenditures or remediation exceeding 20% of any fund's budget. Number five, loss of a primary employer in the city resulted in a 2% or more increase in the city unemployment rate, a projected 10% drop in city valuation or a 10% drop in population. The 10 largest employers of Finy County, as noted in the city ACFR, have shown no indication of a slowdown in the economy. The unemployment rate for December 2024 is 2.5% compared to 1.4% of the previous year. The city does not anticipate a drop in valuation in 2025, which is reflected in the continuation of building permits being issued and preliminary data indicating property values increase over prior year valuations. For December 31, 2024, the calculation of total city population by the Neighborhood and Development Services Department using U.S. Census Bureau data and Reserve Meter data is 30,120. With this information, is the staff's determination that a financial emergency does not exist. According to the resolution for consideration has been prepared. The alternatives for you today are that the governing body may approve the resolution as presented, or the governing body may not approve the resolution as presented and provide staff with additional direction. And staff recommends the governing body approve the resolution as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item. And what's the resolution number?
3158.
3158-2025.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 3158-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second? Any discussion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve following resolution regarding the waiver of generally accepted accounting principles. If approved, it would be resolution number 3159-2025.
At the October 15, 2024, meeting of the City Commission, the governing body approved the transition to utilizing the regulatory basis of accounting prescribed in the Kansas Municipal Auditing and Accounting Guide, or K-MAG, for their annual audit, shifting away from utilizing the U.S. generally accepted accounting principles for GAAP, and issuing an annual comprehensive financial report. In accordance with KSA 75-1128, the city will need to approve a resolution each year that they determine they will not utilize GAAP and instead utilize K-MAG. Resolution presented today waives the requirement of KSA 75-110AA as they apply to the city for year ended December 31, 2025. The alternative for you today is that the governing body may approve the resolution, or that the governing body may not approve the resolution. By not approving the resolution, we would have to continue following GAAP for our annual audit. And staff recommends that the governing body approve the resolution as presented.
Any questions?
So Jared, so I know that you had, I can't remember. I think you said that you had spoken with the auditors, and they also agreed to switch to this plan, or they recommended it? I can't remember if they agreed to it, if they recommended it. I don't know which one.
A little bit of both. We've had discussions for the past few years about kind of the added burdens of using GAAP.
Okay, yeah.[1681.95]
Particularly, they come up with kind of new regulations every year and they add to the requirements that we, the city and the auditors have to go through. And so in analysis of all those kind of additional items being added, we looked at what K-MAG would consist of versus what we do with GAAP and it would save the city money and time and energy on our part and the auditors' part. And so last year, we presented the item to approve that was kind of explaining all those kind of details of the why. And so every year from here on out, we'll have to do this waiver and why. Identify in the beginning of the year, we'll do that kind of going forward. But it's going to become a regular practice to continue to approve, allowing to use K-MAG instead of GAAP.
I appreciate that. I move that we approve resolution number 3159-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and commissioners, item 10E. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution not opting in to participate in demand, response, or aggregations. If approved, it would be resolution 3160-2025. Mike?
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. The city of Garden City is aware of orders that's been sent down by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, known as FERC, with respect to participation of demand, response, and aggregations of distributed energy in wholesale energy markets. The city, through its membership with the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, participates in the wholesale energy market through the Southwest Power Pool. FERC has issued orders relating to the participation of demand, response, and aggregations of distributed energy in wholesale energy markets and provides that utilities who meet specific certain criteria must affirmingly choose to opt in to allow such participation. Staff, along with KMEA staff and council, along with special outside council, have made the determination to recommend to the governing body to not opt in and not allow participation in demand, response, and aggregation of distributed energy resources in wholesale energy markets within its service territory and to pass this resolution as before you today. I will note that if some point later on, if the city commission or the city decided it was a right thing to do would be to opt in, you can always come back and opt in. And right now, we're just recommending to opt out. So the governing body may approve the resolution. The governing body may not approve the resolution and provide staff with alternate directions. Staff recommends that the governing body approve this resolution and there is no financial impact to the city by approving this resolution. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? So opting out just...
Is he approving you the resolution? That's what I was trying to figure out too.
So opting out just doesn't preclude us from any regulation or any type of regulations that we have?
No, it's saying that we will not participate in those type of aggregations of demand, response customers.
Okay.
There's a contract coming up to you later on in your agenda and that would not be possible if we were opting in at that time. So we're opting out of these regulations at this time, which protects the city.
Okay.
So that answers your question, mayor.
Yes. Thank you.
So if any time it becomes advantageous, then they would let us know to say, hey, this is something that's either required or you can't opt out or that is something that would be advantageous to us being a part of?
Yeah, we monitor that all the time. So does KMEA staff and other, and then we would be told right away that it's now advantageous for the city to participate and opt in. And we would come back and provide that information to you at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Entertain a motion then on this item.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3160-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Make note that Commissioner Landgraf stepped down from the bench on this item.
Mayor and commissioners, item 10F. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the annexation of real property into the corporate limits of Garden City, Kansas. If approved, it would be ordinance number 3006-2025.
Yes, mayor and commissioners, this is a rather lengthy memo on this annexation. It's quite, covers quite a bit of different things. So bear with me as I read through this. The primary purpose of this annexation before you today is to incorporate a portion of East Highway K156 into the city limits. While typical road annexations only include the areas designated as right-of-way, the proposed annexation includes additional land for the following reasons. First, the proposed annexation will close a gap between the east city limits boundary and the land that was previously annexed. The gap was created when a large parcel of land owned by Lucky Four Investments, LLC, was annexed into the city in 2022. This was an owner consent annexation, so the annexation only included land owned by that company. This included the north portion of K156 right-of-way running along the entire length of Lucky Four's land. This land, however, does not extend to the east city limits boundary because it terminates at the section line where the old Jenny Barker Road was located. This created a gap of approximately 430 feet between this property and the east city limits boundary. The proposed annexation will close that gap by annexing the remaining north portion of K156 right-of-way along with other right-of-way and a small triangular right-of-way area that each adjoins the east city limits boundaries. Second is the north portion of K156 right-of-way included in this annexation that extends across the larger tract of city-owned land, which was referred to as the Morris Substation. This proposed annexation will annex this entire tract along with the needed parts of north K156 right-of-way. Third, the south portion of K156 right-of-way that adjoins the Lucky Four tract extends across a larger tract of agricultural land that is owned by this Kansas State University and is used by the Southwest Research Extension Center on East Mary Street. This land is subject to an MOU that was entered into between the city and KSU in 2019 for the purposes of extending municipal water service to serve the extension center. As part of the agreement, KSU consented to the annexation of this tract of land and an additional tract of agricultural property located near, which is located at the southwest corner of Mary Street, north of Farmland Road. Although this other tract of land is not located near K156, it adjoins the other portion of the east city limits boundary near Chapel Heights. It should be noted, however, that annexing the other tract of land will only annex the south portion of East Mary Street right-of-way, the west portion of the north Farmland Road right-of-way. The other halves of these right-of-ways will need to be annexed separately and will be brought before the governing body at a subsequent meeting. The interconnected nature of these tracts brought to the governing body today makes the simultaneous annexation the most efficient process to get that done. This also, this property being considered today to be annexed by the governing body is within the certified territory of a retail electric supplier, specifically Wheaton Electric Cooperative. Pursuant to KSA 66-1,176, the city has an obligation to follow the state statute as the city has done in all previous annexations where there were certified territory of the Wheaton Electric Cooperative. So your alternatives today are the governing body may approve the ordinance as presented. The governing body may not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends that the governing body approve the ordinance. And there is no fiscal impact by passing the ordinance at this time. As stated in the body of this memo, KSA 66-1,176 will be followed and subsequent payments to the Wheaton Electric Cooperative will follow. Any expenses incurred will be from the electric department's 2025 budget. And there's a map there that indicates the different tracts of land that are being considered in this ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I would like to note that the assistant city attorney and Wilson Engineering, Adam, worked diligently on making sure that we had this exactly right. So I can't take the credit for that.
Any questions for Mike?
It really helps when you have the map up there and somebody else reading versus us just reading it. And then having that map is really, I think it's helpful. But yeah, I understand it a lot more now that you read it. So you did a good job, Mike. Thanks.
Maps, put the map in there.
Good job, Matt. Good job, Matt and Mike. I need pictures.
So as far as Wheaton's now, this hasn't been taken before them yet to see if they're going, I know in the past, sometimes they've wanted dollars or they've wanted reparations and then other times they've said, no, they haven't. But this has not been brought before them at this time. Is that correct? This is the first step?
Yeah, I notified them last week. This was on the agenda as a courtesy notification that the commission was going to consider it. If it was approved, we would follow up with Wheaton through that process and if they wanted a franchise to serve the property or not, then that all will come.
Then we'll do all the rest of that. Okay. Sure.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move we approve ordinance number 3006-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Mayor and commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a special retail service contract for electric power with Radiant Power Solutions LLC. Mike?
Yes, mayor and commissioners. First off, before I start, I'd like to make sure that you're aware that we have members from Radiant Power Solutions here in the audience, as well as KMEA staff. Should there be any questions after I go through this proposal? Radiant Power Solutions LLC, Radiant, is planning to install up to 10 megawatts of electric load on leased city property adjacent to the Jamison Energy Center located at 325 South Jenny Barker Road. This special retail service contract being considered before you today falls under the city's code, section 90-275, Special Contracts, which allows separate contracts to supply electric power to citizens and others within the city boundaries. City staff, along with outside council staff from the Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, outside consultants, have been meeting with Radiant for over one year, ensuring that the city and KMEA can meet the requirements needed by Radiant and to be in compliance with all of the Southwest Power Pools and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's requirements. The city and KMEA have specifically chosen not to opt in to allow the wholesale market participation pursuant to the regulatory rules and requirements regarding participation as a distributed energy resource, aggregations, and demand response, participation in any form of SPP's integrated marketplace, including but not limited to FERC Order 719, 745, and 2222. Radiant is being compensated by being provided service as an interruptible load under the terms of this agreement. Radiant will not be allowed to register, will not be allowed to permit it, or Radiant will not be permitted to register or participate in SPP's integrated marketplace. This agreement has an initial term of 60 months with an automatic 36-month renewal unless terminated by either party within 12 months of written notice. Three months prior to the end of the initial 60-month period, the city will provide Radiant notice of changes to the rates specified in the agreement. Those adjustments will take place three months after the notice is provided to Radiant and shall be in effect until notice is provided by the city and KMEA to Radiant of any new adjustments. Adjustments cannot be made any more than once every 12 months. The city and KMEA will have the right to interrupt service to Radiant by providing 60 minutes advanced notice prior to the interruption, except in the case of an emergency energy alert issued by the Southwest Power Pool or the transmission system operator, or if it's a local Garden City system emergency requiring no advanced notice. Rates for the initial 60-month period include a customer charge of $200 a month, a demand charge of $5.56 per KW month, and the actual cost of SPP's network integration transmission service based upon Radiant's contribution to the city's peak demand at the time of Sunflower Electric Power Corporation's monthly transmission peak. Radiant will pay the city $60,536.42 for its share of capital cost improvements to the city's distribution system. Radiant will provide a $50,000 deposit within 10 days of the execution of this agreement and an additional $20,000 deposit 10 days prior to the initiation of the first 2 megawatts of service. In addition, a $20,000 deposit will be required for every additional 500 KW increment before the additional load can be implemented. If Radiant fails to provide the required service or if the deposit is not provided within five business days of the required date, the city reserves the right to terminate this agreement. An interest upon the deposit will accrue as indicated in section 90-85 of the city code of ordinances of any funds that we would be holding. Alternatives, the governing body may approve the special retail services contract with Radiant Power Solutions and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Or number two, the governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign a special services contract with Radiant Power Solutions. Staff recommends that the governing body approve the special retail service contract with Radiant Power Solutions, authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. And the fiscal note is all expenses and revenues associated with this contract will come from the electric department budget, which is considered an enterprise account and will have no impact to the general fund. Revenues are estimated to be in the $450,000 range over the expenses per year and not to depend upon the amount of power that is consumed by Radiant in any given 12-month period. And I'm happy to answer any questions, mayor and commissioners. And I know, I believe Josh would like to address the commission if you have a few minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, we just want to thank you guys.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Trey Ashmanlock and I'm the CEO of Radiant Power Solutions. You know, we have a couple other entities and I really wanted to thank all of Garden City, especially Matt, Mike, and the Vinnie County Economic Development, Shannon, Lana, Steve, and everybody there. The first time I made the trip from Nebraska was 17 Jan of 2024. You know, it's been amazing. Like it's been about as welcoming as we could ever imagine. Like you guys have a great city, veteran city, veteran in the electric department. We were pleased and very excited to kind of get started on this project. Our plan is to get started by next month, be operational by next month. So, and then, yeah, we are just very excited and looking forward to kind of getting, you know, on it. And, you know, we also appreciate like the consideration leasing us the Jamison Energy Center property, the one behind it. We are looking to make good use of it and it will be very beneficial for us and for the state as well. So, yeah, and this is Bradley.
Bradley Groom, 552 10th Avenue, New Brighton, Pennsylvania. So if there's anything I can just echo here, that I really appreciate the thoroughness that we got from the energy department here at Garden City as well as KMEA. This is one of these, one of these things to where we wanted to make sure every T was crossed and every I was dotted. And, you know, there's been a little bit of back and forth, but I think we got everything like just hunky-dory, like smoothed out very well right now. And I just want to say thank you for all that. Because it's often, it's much better to just try to figure out any sort of issues that might come up. You know, you use that creative side of your mind and anticipate certain challenges. And we think we have, you know, them all ironed out. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for choosing Garden City. So how did you choose, I mean, you know, coming here? I mean, it's not very often that people come and say, hey, we'd like to offer you almost a half a million dollars. So that's really awesome. But so tell, how'd you choose Garden City as far as, or did Garden City choose you? So it could be a little bit of both, so.
So this is very funny. We have a facility in Beatrice, Nebraska, and our power consultant there for the city is John Kudjuski, who has worked for the city of Garden City before. And we were very happy, like this is 2023, like October, we were having dinner with him and we were like, you know, we were like, this is great what we got going. And Beatrice was like, do you think there could be something, you know, else in another city? And he was like, you know what? Go to Garden City. Maybe talk to those guys. Talk to Mike. Mike is great. And we're like, absolutely. So next day, we call Lana and she was busy and she called us right back. And that's how it started. So it was destined to be.
Good. Welcome to Garden City. That's awesome.
If there's one other thing that I can add too, is that whenever we're prospecting for prospective sites, not many conversations make it a year. Oftentimes, it's like, okay, you kind of, you know, you fill out this city, you fill out this town, whatever it might be. So the fact that we're a year plus and like we're here at the council meeting, it says a lot about our commitment here and it's been mutual, so.
Yeah, like you're explaining it as be hunky-dory. You don't hear that very often. So that's, I'll have to remember to use that more often.
Hunky-dory.
Yeah. Hunky-dory.
So for the general public, could you guys speak a little bit to what Radiant will use its electricity for?
Do I take it, or will me?
Yeah, just for the general public, could you guys speak about what Radiant will use this electricity for?
Um, yeah, it'll be for our data center, for our blockchain operations. You know, we have, like, a pilot project for AI as well, like, just graphic cards processing. We have been doing this for over eight years in New York, and then, you know, past two years, year and a half or so in Nebraska as well, so this would be on their side.
Thank you. Choosing the Midwest is a wise decision, so. Any other questions? Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just curious about, you guys said you're going to be operational in one month or a couple months? What kind of facility are you bringing in? Is, is, so you're right next to our energy plant, what, what are you working out of from that location?
Um, yeah, it'll be similar prefabricated modular data center structures. The lead times, you know, for switchgear and other electrical infrastructure is way out these days, so we kind of manufacture our own now to, you know, standards to make sure. And then, that's what we use, because our data centers are purpose-built, where they can, you know, they're more so computational data center rather than data storage. So, that's how we are able to interrupt our load and not consume electricity when the city needs it.
Okay. I just want to be able to identify, you know, when, when the community sees something new in town, they always ask, what is that? And so we've got to be able to, well, what's it look like? So we can then say, oh, that's Radiant, so, but thank you for that info.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve the special retail service contract with Radiant Power Solutions and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Baron Commissioners, 12B is a related topic mentioned during the discussion of 12A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a lease agreement with Radiant Power Solutions LLC to lease approximately three acres of city proper, property adjacent to the Jamison Energy Center at 325 South Jenny Barker Road. Mike.
Yes. Radiant Power Solutions LLC, Radiant, is requesting to lease approximately three acres of city property adjacent to the Jamison Energy Center located at 325 South Jenny Barker Road. If this proposed lease agreement and the special retail service contract for electric power that will be considered, that was just considered and approved, Radiant is planning to install up to 10 megawatts of data processing, data mining equipment on the three acres. The term of the lease is for five years and will automatically renew for an additional five years unless terminated by either party after providing a 12-month notice within the first five years of the agreement. After the first five years of the agreement, either party may terminate at any time with a one-year notice. Radiant will pay the city $2,666.67 per month, or $32,000 per year for the first year, and then will increase 5% per year for a total of $183,302 over the five-year term. Radiant shall be responsible for the maintenance and repairs, improvements to the leased property, and agrees to operate it in a safe and economically, environmentally responsible manner. Radiant agrees to keep the property clean and in a clean condition, to keep all grass, weeds, and vegetation cut and trimmed in compliance with the city's code of ordinances, and Radiant shall pay all utility charges in connection to the use of the leased property should there be any. The governing body, the alternatives are the governing body may approve the five-year lease agreement with Radiant Power Solutions LLC, or the governing body may choose to not approve the lease agreement. Staff recommends the governing body approve the five-year lease agreement with Radiant Power Solutions. And the states in the body of the memo, the city will receive $32,000 per year for the first year, and then increase 5% per year for a total of $183,302 over the five-year term, and I'd be happy to answer any questions there. Also, I believe there's a map that shows the location of where that would be.
Any question? It's for Mike. Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to approve a five-year lease agreement with Radiant Power Solutions LLC.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Baron Commissioners, item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve leasing 18 vehicles through the Enterprise Fleet Management Program. Mike.
Yes, still here. Back on November 19th of 2024, the governing body considered and approved a master service agreement with Fleet Management Group, referred to as Enterprise, to explore the possibilities of replacing a portion of city vehicles by leasing them through Enterprise. City staff identified 18 vehicles to experiment with, with this leasing program. The length of the, the length of four vehicles is for three years, is a four-three-year leasing term, while the remaining 14 vehicles are for five years. The leasing vehicle is going to be paid off at any time with no penalty. The street department has two four-wheel-drive pickups, the parks and recreation department has three four-wheel-drive pickup trucks, wastewater has two four-wheel-drive pickups, the fire department has three four-by-four crew cab pickup trucks, the police department has one four-by-four double cab pickup, and four four-wheel-drive Tahos and one all-drive Traverse. There's also one front-wheel-drive Trax vehicle for administration, and one four-by-four super cab in the fleet department. All of these vehicles have a trade-in that varies in age, has a trade-in unit, has varies in age anywhere from a 2000 to a 2017 model year, and the mileage range is anywhere from 35,000 to over 118,000 miles. The estimated trade-in value of these units to be traded is $162,500, and the annual lease payment for all 18 vehicles is $192,782. The vehicles will be replaced in the 2025, they will be replaced in 2025 with the monthly lease payment starting on each vehicle when it gets replaced, so they all won't necessarily happen on the same day. It is estimated that if the 18 vehicles were purchased outright at an average estimated cost of $45,000, it would require $810,000 one-time payment, and we all know that that's an awful lot of money to come out of anybody's fund at one time. All 18 vehicles come with a maintenance program that Enterprise will insure as being followed, and the city will continue to have the vehicles insured by its insurance agency. Should any of the vehicles be in an accident and totaled, the payment from insurance would go to paying off the remainder of the lease. Enterprise will also provide an ongoing analysis to the city, including the most cost-effective vehicle makes and models, the cents cost per mile, total cost of ownership, and replacement analysis in an overall lifecycle cost analysis. If approved today, the vehicles would be ordered and received in 2025. So, the alternatives, the governing body approved leasing the 18 vehicles that identified in the body of this memo, or the governing body does not approve this lease. Staff recommends that the governing body approve the lease agreement as presented. And the fiscal note is that the total replacement cost of these vehicles is $192,782, with an estimated trade-in value of $162,500. The balance of the cost of this for 2025-year budget year will be $30,282. This amount will be allocated to the applicable departments within the general fund and enterprise funds, and included in the 2025 revised budget. Apart from the wastewater department, no funds were originally allocated for the replacement of these vehicles in the original 2025 budget. For the ongoing annual cost of the $192,782, a breakdown of department's cost is as follows: The fire department will be $37,904, police department will be $75,311, street department $17,612, parks will be $8,806, cemetery $8,806, recreation $8,806, and administration $5,304. Wastewater $17,612, and fleet will be $12,624. Unless any changes or cancels are in the lease agreement, the amounts would be included in the 26 to 29 budgets as we go forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or if there's any questions of anybody that was served on that committee to help put all this together, be happy to answer that.
Any questions for Mike or the committee?
So, like, on the specialized equipment for, like, the fire department, police department, well, do they come fully equipped, or we'll have to?
No, they'll take, no, go ahead. They'll take the equipment that is currently in their current vehicles, and that'll be transferred into their new vehicle. That's a cost that's associated with the police department's normal budget or the fire department's.
And we do that ourselves, or do they have somebody else do that?
A contractor that does that. JR, JR.
JR Auto, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I see this as a long-term saving, and also, you're going to get the best vehicles for the lowest cost. I mean, it's, you know, maintaining, I know there's, the buyout is really, but.
It's, it's a test to see how well this works for us. There are other communities in Kansas that come with lots of recommendations, positive recommendations. Some other communities have chosen to do their whole fleet this way. We, we think it'd be best to take a smaller approach, see if it works well first.
Okay.
And now, on the types of vehicles, it's a trade-in, one-for-one, as far as, like, three four-by-four pickups, three four-by-four crew cabs? Is it even swap? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item, then.
I move that we approve the leasing, leasing the 18 vehicles as identified in the body of the memo.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Make note that Commissioner Ortiz is stepping down on this item.
Baron Commissioners, item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve authorizing the mayor to sign a lease and service agreement between Safe Haven Baby Boxes, Inc. and the city of Garden City. Chief Ursic.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. The Garden City Department began exploring the idea of a Safe Haven Baby Box last year after two Garden City Community College students presented the idea to the governing body at township meeting, town homing. The presentation highlighted the benefits of the box as a safe anonymous way for parents in distress to surrender infants, ensuring their safety and well-being. As a result, GCFD staff have been working with the architects across the construction and Safe Haven Baby Box, Inc., to determine feasibility implementation at Station 3. A location at Station 3 has been identified should the governing body authorize the mayor to sign the proposed agreement. This would be the second Safe Haven Baby Box within the state of Kansas. Safe Haven Baby Box, Inc. will provide education to both public and emergency service personnel related to the use of the baby box, as well as provide annual inspections and maintenance. The city will be responsible for keeping the Safe Haven Baby Box in good working order, maintaining alarm monitoring services, and providing immediate notice of any malfunctions. The term of the agreement is for five years, and with the ability to renew five-year increments upon mutual agreement between both parties. The upfront cost for Safe Haven Baby Box is $15,500. If the agreement is renewed, there is a $500 renewal fee. Installing a Safe Haven Baby Box at Station 3 presents an opportunity for GCFD to enhance its service to the community and support vulnerable individuals. The alternative for you, or if the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign a lease and service agreement between Safe Haven Baby Box, Inc. and the city of Garden City. Alternative two would be the governing body may authorize, may not authorize the mayor to sign the lease and service agreement between Safe Haven Baby Box, Inc. and the city of Garden City, provide further guidance. Staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor to sign the lease and service agreement between Safe Haven Baby Box, Inc. and the city of Garden City. Funds for the fiscal note on this, the funds will be coming out of the Station 3 sales tax fund. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions for chief on this item?
So, on the renewal fee, is it renewal $500 for each five-year term? Just to get clarification.
$500 a year.
Per year? Okay, that's why I just want to make sure.
Where is the other box? You said this would be the second one in Kansas, where's the other one located?
It was a month ago, Hutchison Fire Department was the first one in the state to implement the Safe Haven Baby Box.
So it's only been there a month, so, okay.
Yeah.
Have you guys reviewed that one, or did you get a chance to look at it before, or?
Other than online, and talking to the chief here from Hutch, so.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a lease and service agreement between Safe Haven Baby Boxes, Inc. and the city of Garden City.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you. Chief, while we're waiting, could you give us a brief update on where Station 3's at right quick, while you're here? While we're waiting for Commissioner Ortiz to get back to the bench?
Yes, the project is moving along really, really good. Still showing about 15 weeks ahead of schedule. I went out there today to give Chief Ruda a tour. Carpet is being installed, the ceiling tiles have all been put in, started to template the countertops, most of the bed, beds have been put together, lockers are there. Probably the next couple of months, you'll start to see everything getting trimmed out and start testing the systems that are in there, so it's moving along really, really well. External, or exterior finishes have started to go on and trim outs on the inside, so. Way ahead of schedule, looking good and on budget, so.
Yeah, no, the size of it's, when you drive out, I mean, it seems, it seemed, you know, a normal size, but when you go out there now, it just seems huge, so it's really, when the glass went in, it really changed the appearance, so.
Antique fire truck, the, I shouldn't say antique, the old fire truck that'll be going into the, into the station?
It's currently out of one of the volunteer, one of our volunteer firefighters that have been with us for a while here at CMO owns All Pro Auto, so it's out in his shop right now. I did just get a video Saturday, they did get it running, so I'm trying to wrap it up, and I think we need to order a radiator or some repairs to it to see if we can make a parade-worthy, so.
Okay. Exciting times. Thanks for the update, chief.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to provide staff direction regarding next steps for the temporary relocation of the Garden City Police Department from the law enforcement center.
Good afternoon again, Mayor Commissioners. At the pre-meeting on January 21st of 2025, the city commission discussed assumptions regarding the temporary relocation of the Garden City Police Department from the law enforcement center. Lo is intended to articulate what staff believe were the key takeaways from a majority of the commission during that meeting. There is a desire to move back into the LEC after the proposed project, the proposed remodel is completed. For planning purposes, use eight years as the anticipated timeline. There is a desire to move GCPD out of the LEC as quickly as possible. Preference to acquire land to build a new temporary facility. There was not city-owned property that was of interest to a majority of the city commission. Through the design process, there was a desire to move, to have some at a minimum. Improvements made to meet the specific needs of GCPD to include things like storm shelters, enhanced windows, exterior structure improvements. Cost not to exceed a two mil increase. Request an extension from the county to stay in the LEC until a desired outcome is identified, and a new space can be completed, with a desire to have that extension be as short as possible, and a desire to have control over the process. Since the pre-meeting, there have been subsequent questions from members of the governing body regarding the lease proposal that was submitted by Gary Dick with Dick Construction Incorporated. As a reminder, that proposal was submitted on November 19th, 2024, outside of the city commission's formal request for, request for proposal process that was initiated on September 3rd of 2024. That proposal has been attached to your agenda packet. As a result, staff would request the governing body provide some specific direction regarding whether or not there is a desire to consider this proposal as a viable option. If there is a desire to consider the lease option for the property located at 1210 Fleming or the Old Westlake Building, staff would request direction to either invite the property owner or their designee to the next city commission meeting to answer questions of the governing body, or direct staff to begin negotiations for use of that facility. If there is not a desire to consider this option, staff would request clarification related to that as well. Based on the discussion at the pre-meeting, it appeared there was a desire by a majority of the city commission to proceed with a temporary facility for the GCPD and to acquire land to do so. If that is accurate, staff would recommend the governing body provide direction to begin the site identification process, and to bring back a request for qualification for a construction manager at risk, so that the design professionals and builders can start to be identified. There are four alternatives before you today. The first, the governing body may direct staff to begin the site identification process and bring back a request for qualification for a construction manager at risk. Two, the governing body may direct staff to either invite the property owner or designee of 1210 Fleming to the February 18th, 2025 city commission meeting for a presentation, or begin negotiations with the property owner for use of that facility. Or three, the governing body could direct staff to run those two processes concurrently, bringing you back a request for qualification at your next meeting, as well as either invite the property owner to give a presentation for 1210 Fleming, or begin those negotiations. Or the governing body may provide alternative direction. Staff has no recommendation. The fiscal note related to this will really depend on what direction you would like staff to move forward with, to the extent that we can incorporate that into your 2025 amended budget, we will do so. I would be happy to answer any questions you all may have related to this item.
Any questions?
So, I, so I just, understanding the process, and I really appreciate the recap, that made a big difference. So in thinking about this idea about, you know, wanting us to have our own building apart from, I mean, temporary, it's truly temporary to me, is, you know, 12 to 18 months in a, in a separate facility that we don't own, and then at some time, having something that's over that eight-year period that we would own for a period of time. Now, is that still, am I still understanding that that's the direction that we're going?
The couple hours that we spent in the pre-meeting talking about that, one of the things was, instead of using words like temporary, permanent, whatever, I mean, the definition of temporary is that you're going to move back at some point in time. That's, that's, I mean, I get it that you may have a sentiment that says 12 to 18 months, but the idea is, we still want to move back in with Fannie County Sheriff's Office, that's our intent. So, you all come to a consensus around the timeframe that you feel comfortable using as a group, and what you set as a group in that workshop was eight years, and that's what's in the recap on this agenda item, so none of us know how long, I mean, so what we really needed was the group to say, what number do you want us to use for planning purposes, and, you know, understanding that it's going to be wrong, right, unless it lands exactly on the eight, that day, it's either going to be short or it's going to be long, but for planning purposes, can we agree on a, a best guess for right now? And that was eight years.
And I think to that point, I think the question really today is, to what extent do you all want to consider the lease option that was brought before you at your meeting on November 19th, and to what extent do you want staff to kind of engage in those conversations? And to what extent do you want staff to kind of engage in those conversations versus to what extent do you all want us to come back with a construction manager at risk to accomplish, you know, moving forward with building, building something for that eight-year duration that we identified at the pre-meeting?
I guess you're just wanting consensus on moving forward on which direction we really want to go.
Yes, or do you want to run those two things concurrently? Do you want a presentation from the property owner? Or do you want staff to enter into negotiations, bring back something for your consideration? Or do you want us to move down, finding a land, starting the land acquisition process and identifying designers and builders to move forward with a new facility?
I mean, my preference would be that we run them concurrently so that we are moving forward on both fronts. But I guess I'm confused, so does that mean the other, so there were three, there were three proposals, one came in late that day?
Correct.
So does that mean the other two are not going to be considered? Or is everything back on the table?
No, the, as far as, as far as staff's concerned, the first process that went out and we got proposals back, that process has ended. Neither of those two properties, neither of those two proposals were selected. So that's where we wanted to come back to you all at the pre-meeting to say, okay, let's kind of start from square one and identify the best pathway forward. There have been some, at the pre-meeting, kind of that third proposal came up in a couple comments, we've gotten a couple additional questions, and so we really just want to verify with you, do you want staff to spend any time related to that proposal? Or do you want to move forward with acquiring land and starting the design and construction process for a new facility? Or do you want us to do both of those?
If this gets put back out for RFQ, those two submit, those two submittals could come back and offer another solution that they have. So they're not, they're, they're not off, completely off the table. Their, their outcome just might be a little different.
Right, right. And they would, they would participate as part of a new process.
Yeah, so it seems to me if the consideration is knowing that we're set on building, knowing that we're set on acquiring land, then to save staff's time, alternative of finding a CMAR makes the most sense. But if we're kind of hesitant on the possibilities, I think concurrently also offers us the flexibility of it, but it is at the cost of staff's time.
The one thing is, I think, if you want to build, I mean, even in the, you know, even if they did it very quickly and we, the process ran smoothly, it'd still be two years to a building. So, I mean, again, the idea is to get them out of this building, and so I don't really know, I mean, do we honor those other proposals also and have all three of them, or renegotiate and bring them up? I mean, I want to get them out of the building as soon as possible and then, but also go that same route where we're looking at building, understanding that we can do both. I mean, because it's, we're going to have to pay rent anywhere, I mean, we're going to have to do something over at the county. Have you talked to the county yet at all, or?
We have not.
Until this is, until this is finalized, okay.
Mayor, open to alternative three. I think it'd be best running both at the same time. I think there's benefits to both. I think the building makes sense location-wise and also kind of square footage-wise as well, but at the same time, I'd like to start exploring that option of construction as well at the same time. And also in case the lease terms are not favorable towards us as well.
Okay.
I have a question here. What does a negotiation look like? And I think your presentation to me makes sense, but what would negotiations, negotiations look like to bring back to us? I'm not too clear on that.
Yeah, so I, I think depending, if we go with the presentation, that's pretty straightforward from a staff perspective. We'll prep an agenda item, we'll invite them to come and kind of walk through their proposal like we did the other two applicants that were able to go through the process. If you direct staff to enter into negotiations, then we would start to work with that property owner on kind of what terms of a lease may look like. That, I don't know if we could get prepared and brought back to you all for consideration at the February 18th meeting, and that may have a little bit longer lead time, just because you're, you're actively going back and forth between attorneys and that type of thing. So if you wanted us to start that negotiation process, you probably wouldn't have that before you for the 18th, but we as city staff would work with our legal team, work with their legal team to come to, come to terms with what a lease agreement may look like and actually bring that lease agreement back to you all when it was ready.
Yeah.
So the, the presentation would almost be an interim step if you wanted to think about it that way.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
No.
Cool. Entertain a motion on this item then.
I move, we direct staff to proceed with both alternatives concurrently and direct staff to begin site identification process, bring back a request for qualification for construction manager at risk, and direct staff to invite the property owner of 1210 Fleming to the February 18th City Commission meeting for a presentation.
There's been a motion for alternative three, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second? Any other discussion on that item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Nay. Passed.
Thank you.
Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Community Health Advisory Board. Dante?
The Community Health Advisory Board is made up of nine members appointed by the governing body. The board is charged with advising the governing body on policy matters and programs as they relate to the community health and the physical environment, and making funding recommendations to, for the community grant. Currently, there is one vacant position on the board after Robert Yawn's term ended on December 31st, 2024, and he did not wish to be reappointed. The Community Health Advisory Board met on January 14th, 2025, and recommended appoint Sadeh Akikar to the, fill the vacant three-year term. Attached are the applications that the Community Health Advisor Board considered in the meeting minutes. There are two alternatives in front of me. The governing body may appoint Sadeh Akikar to fill the current vacancy and serve on the Community Health Advisor Board for a three-year term, or the governing body may not, I'm sorry, the governing body may appoint another community member to fill the current vacancy and serve on the Community Health Advisor Board for a three-year term. The Community Health Advisor Board recommends the governing body appoint Sadeh Akikar to fill the current vacancy and serve on the Community Health Advisor Board for a three-year term. I'm happy to answer any questions.
These are three very qualified candidates that was, that was really neat to see, so.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we appoint Asadar, how you say his last name? Akikar? To fill the vacancies, the current vacancy and serve on the Community Health Advisory Board for a three-year term.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Thank you.
Item 12G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve reappointing Stuart Nelson to the Fannie County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. The City of Garden City appoints three members to the FCEDC Board of Directors. Stuart Nelson is completing his first term on the board. The attached memo from FCDC President Lana Duvall indicates Stuart's willingness to continue to serve. Stuart Nelson is currently serving as the FCEDC Board Chair, and as indicated in the letter, the board supports his reappointment. Alternatives, the governing body may approve reappointing Stuart Nelson to a three-year term on the FCEDC Board of Directors, or the governing body may direct staff to solicit interest for this position on the FCEDC Board of Directors and bring the item back for future consideration. Staff recommends the reappointment of Stuart Nelson to the three-year term.
Any questions on this item? Entertain a motion.
I move to approve reappointing Stuart Nelson to a three-year term on the FCEDC Board of Directors.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second? Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
The consent agenda item is two issues, so the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda item 13A and 13B, unless you want to pull one of those off and talk about them separately.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda item 13A and 13B.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second? Any questions on that one? None being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed.
That concludes business.
Commissioner reports, Commissioner Langrath.
So I just want to start by saying it was a great pre-meeting, being able to go through water, sewage, and also drain, drain off as well, so it's good to having that and getting that information. Also, just wanted to say a tremendous job by both the Garden City and Holcomb Fire Department raising $9,418 for a great cause. Also, just want to say thank you to everyone who also participated and as well donated to a great cause. Then also, I just want to give a shout out to the social media team on a tremendous job on the new video recap. I have gotten a lot of feedback from people on that, and they really do appreciate it. It's really nice being able to get, a lot of people can't go through the hour, 22 hours that we have a meeting. So it's really nice being able to have a short-form version of it, and then if there is an issue that they want to see the full discussion of, they can click the link and be able to get a full discussion of that. So I just want to say it was a tremendous job by you guys on that, and also tremendous job getting it out so quickly. I think it was out the very next day after the commission meeting, so great job.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yeah, also great interview report. I'm very impressed to see the Muscians Department cater to the needs of each social media platform instead of just having a blanket strategy across all of them. I was also wondering for the Safe Haven Box, if, if staff could reach out to the three gal presenters? I don't remember their names, and just to update them on where we've gone with the process, and hopefully with, by the time the fire, new fire station is finished, invite them also to Ripley Cutting. I know that they're probably not in Garden City anymore, but it'd be great to have them. And also, Happy Lunar New Year, this was this past week, and a reminder of the invitation from the Municipalities Association for us to the Lunar New Year Party on February 9th at High School.
All right. Commissioner Ortiz?
Yeah, I did attend the Fannie County Economic Development Annual Meeting, and that was some great information there. If you didn't attend, I'd suggest you get with Lana or Shannon Dick to ask for their presentation points. It's, it's, it's an eye-opener as far as where we, where we're at today versus where we came from. So Shannon did a great presentation of indicating kind of our, our hub and who we connect with and the outreach that we have on surrounding communities. So it was a great opportunity to find out where we land and, and how we're growing, so appreciate that information from the Fannie County Economic Development Corporation. I also did ask, I had, the Facebook, the takeover, I was, I was asked that Brecken needs to do more of those takeovers so that those kind of, those kind of laughs get out there in the community too. So yeah, social media has done a wonderful job and kind of showing some different communication processes that can be shared out there on social media, so good job. Also was asked about the stakeholder meetings, if those were in fruition, if those are happening? If so, could there be some sort of a report on that? Just a short report on those meetings with stakeholders involving the county, city, hospitals, St. House Hospital, and USD 457, so those stakeholders. I believe it was mentioned before about those starting back up, so I'd like to see if those are happening and have a short update on that. Also, just like to encourage the collaboration of joint county, city, and Holcomb Commission meetings. I think those have happened before in the past, but they haven't happened in a while, but we're getting back into that. Our first one starts the next City Commission meeting, the 3rd, I believe, or March?
February 18th?
February 18th, thank you, yes. So, so I'm looking forward to that, so keeping the collaboration and lines open with those Holcomb and, and county so we can talk about some things. But with, with that mentioning, I believe there's a lot of things that, that's happening now in, in our community involving county, involving Holcomb with the growth, as you heard, with our infrastructures and things like that with, with our pre-meeting this morning. We do need to just kind of be in that forefront and know what's happening so that we could all kind of rub elbows together and, and figure out some ways that we can, we can come up with a solution for those efforts. But last thing, no, that's it. That's all in my notes, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Enru.
Yeah, so I did enjoy the pre-meeting. It's, you know, there's a lot of things that happen in the city that we don't see, and I'm glad we don't, and so when you talk about water and sewage and stormwater, but I, you know, I think our municipal departments have done a really great job, and I, you know, I really appreciate the recommendations from the advisory. You know, those are things, when they go through those, that, you know, again, they are the ones who really nitpick and find, you know, the things that we really need to know. I'm really excited about Radiant coming, that was, that was a surprise. I knew that, we had talked about it a while back, that there was something that was being negotiated, having you actually here in Garden City, Kansas. And I mean, Kansas is, like, you know how Nebraska's really nice? Kansas is that much better, so we're excited about that. Not that, not that we have anything about Nebraska, but you know, it's a little bit warmer here, so, not today. I was really excited to attend the Fannie County Economic Development, their annual meeting is, as Commissioner Ortiz said, it's always really excellent. The information is really excellent, but it really talks about how it really takes all of the entities in this community to really make sure that the things that we can bring together. And so I'm also excited about bringing together, it's been almost two years since the City Commission and the County Commission have even met, but I think it'll be really good, especially with the new County Commissioners over there, and so we're excited about their getting, getting to work and doing some really great things. I know the police department, it's something that as we're moving forward, I know it seems like we're taking baby, we, we took a big step and then we took a step back, and now we're taking baby steps. But, you know, the thing is, I know that we really want to do what's right for not only the police department, but also for our community, and so, you know, some of these decisions are hard to make, and sometimes there's, there's, there's things that you have to consider otherwise, but I'm really grateful that that is moving forward. And just, you know, and the last thing is, I, I know a lot of people have been visiting, unfortunately, the doctor or the emergency room, and so again, check on neighbors, check on people, you know, this stuff that's going around, it's not easy, but, you know, the thing is, is making sure that we take care of one another. I had a neighbor the other day called me, and she said, I, I need to go to the emergency room, and so I was able to take her to the emergency room and was able to stay with her, and so, you know, it was packed. So just again, you know, make sure we're praying for our medical professionals, there are a lot of things that are happening, and I know that they are overworked, and there's a lot of things happening in our community. That, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Enru. Just a quick overview, I'm not going to rehash what all the other commissioners said, a lot of good comments. Just kind of what I said during the, during the meeting is, sales tax was really outstanding, so I'd like to thank everybody for shopping, not only locally, but people coming from out of town and coming to Garden City to shop, so please shop local and fly local. I did not have the opportunity to attend the annual economic development meeting because I was actually attending the Local Government Day in Topeka last week. I was also a part of the League of Kansas Municipalities Meeting last week as well. Last evening, Matt Allen, City Manager, and Lana Duvall, who's the Fannie County Economic Development President, attended the Kansas, Southwest Kansas Chamber tonight out in Topeka, and had a lot of good conversations with people from Southwest Kansas, but also our,